Thank you and welcome to all of you tonight. Hopefully, it will be an interesting but not overwhelming agenda. And then we won't get stormed out tonight. We had minutes we want to review for June 18th and July 2nd. Do we have a motion to accept them or are there any corrections and additions that need to be made?
Move we accept, second.
All right, to clarify, are you moving for both of them?
Yes, sir. I'm setting for both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is. Thank you. Lisa, can you do the manager's report and the other parts of the announcements section of the agenda, please?
The police website that we've been working on is now online. It still has some corrections that need to be made on it, but the core of the police website is up. There will be a button on our main website that will lead you to that website. We're waiting for that to be done, but it's the main website address, Kennett.PA.us. Then you do a forward slash Kennett, or KTPD. And next we'll be putting crime maps up there and reports as soon as Bill gets that done.
Good morning.
Bill's working on that with Officer Knoll. Paving will begin in the end of August. We're going to do Clifton Drive, Cedarwood and Whitetail Drive, and Olive Fire Road from East Marlboro Township line to Rosedale Road. There was, I know last month we talked about a fire that occurred at Granite Ridge. Two weeks later, there was vandalism of the buildings. Somebody flooded two of the buildings and I'm looking at our building inspector over here to make sure I'm saying everything correctly that occurred, but they, I think they smashed some of the windows, cut some of the plumbing. So now, you know, hopefully they have cameras up there now and that is being investigated by the police. We received the sidewalk grant that we applied for, for $850,000. That will be for sidewalks from Granite Ridge down to Rosedale and from Rosedale into the Borough. And then from on Cypress Street, from the Kennett-Borough line into New Garden Township to the intersection of Scarlet and Cypress. And from Penns Manor Development on Old Baltimore Pike into the Borough. We have a kickoff meeting for that next week.
You do?
Not you. We just received our pavement management proposal from our engineering firm, which gives us 16 years out of what we should do to each road and when we should do it, whether it's a repair or overlay for the road. We met about that today and we're making some revisions to that based upon our road master's suggestions and what he's paving this year. We also received our physical needs assessment for all the buildings and lands that the township owns, so we just, we haven't reviewed that yet, but we just received it. And that's it.
I want to, I want to chime in on the two, two items that are, from my perspective, new and I think are important. The one is the building assessment that looks at this building and how is it holding up and is it meeting the design and expectations that were in place when it was first built, as well as the maintenance garage. And the engineer report, both of these are new this year, things that your supervisors were concerned that we create a baseline because it hadn't been done before that. And so having the engineer report regarding the roads opens up an opportunity to look at what our road needs are and how to properly manage them over a finite but significant period of time, 15 years, I believe. Are we, are we doing it the right way by oiling and chipping or do we need to do other things or is it some other combination of ways to address it? So we now are in the process of getting the information that we didn't have before. So I really wanted to call to the attention of the township, both of these reports, because I think that in the long run, they are very important for who we are and where we're going.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
You talk about road, road conditions. I think we need to put some more pressure on the state on Kalin Road from Five Points all the way to Route 41. There are some deep cracks, longitudinal cracks in that road, and there's some very deep, small, they're small, but they're four and five and six inch deep potholes on the way out to Route 41. And it's been that way for quite a while.
And there's huge ruts in the side of the road.
There are ruts, yes, on the way down to the stop sign at Kalin Road and Marshall Bridge Road.
We have talked to PennDOT and they're getting to it.
I'm sorry, please.
But we can write a letter to them and see if that helps. I don't know if that will help or not.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad that you called our attention to it so that we can, so we all need to do is when we know of a particular road that's in contention, because the evaluation that was done, that I was just talking about, is for township roads, not for state and county roads.
Right.
So Kalin would probably not be, be on that list. So your input becomes very important. I'm sure Roger knows about it, but, but thank you.
I just wanted to know when the kickoff meeting will be for the sidewalk grants?
The 22nd.
Thank you. At what time?
It's at 11:00 a.m., but that's not a public meeting.
Oh, it's not?
No, it's just for the DVR PC and me and representative from New Garden and our engineer.
Okay, thank you.
DVR PC was the funding?
Yes.
Of course?
Yes.
But the point of the meeting is it's a next step in the process of ultimately building the walkway that we committed to doing to allow people to walk from the Borough to the New Garden Shopping Center and other areas in a safe fashion rather than walking on the shoulder of the road, being grazed by 18-wheelers going by. Yes, Bill?
I just kind of mentioned, Lisa's willing to write a letter to the PennDOT about that. Maybe you could insert a sentence about Miller's Hill into the Borough, I guess State Street. In the township portion of the hill, there's some very deep potholes there that make people swerve into the ongoing lane, the opposite lane.
It seems like PennDOT has a way of putting pressure on us. They, I let Rich speak for himself on this, but he, as well as the other supervisors, were reviewing the, the bridge report on Birdville. And there were two years of reports making reference to the condition and they weren't doing anything about it or maintaining it or any of the rest of it, but they're happy to tell us what we're doing wrong. Yes, Joe?
On that $850,000 grant, are there matching funds involved?
No, the, the total project will cost about a million dollars. Both townships have to pay 20%. So the township's portion's about $120,000. New Garden is about a third of that, because only 20% of the projects in their township.
So the DDR do a lot of these grants or?
They do. This was, I think they had another, they had a round of these grants two years ago. And I think there were 40 townships that were awarded some amount.
So that's great. I think so.
I think it's great.
Fairly good connection to areas that are growing, certainly in the Borough and that area. Anyone reads the paper about, I know your place and that group brewery coming in.
Right.
I think it's a, it's a good thing. Thank you.
It's a great project.
It was my understanding, by the way, Lisa, that although there are other municipalities which have received grants in the past, this is an unusual grant that you were able to accomplish for us.
Yes.
I publicly acknowledge the good job you've done on that.
Thanks. I'm happy we got it. I thought while we have our new zoning officer here, I can just introduce her. She thought she would come to a township meeting. This is Diane Clayton. She started last Monday as our full-time zoning officer. She has over 20 years' experience as a zoning officer. So we're happy to have her. She'll never come to a meeting again.
Where was her previous zoning?
West Coshen Township.
West Coshen?
Yes.
Are you a lawyer?
I am not.
Thank God.
No, I meant that seriously. Sometimes it helps.
You had a very serious look on your face that you were going somewhere.
Sometimes it doesn't help.
Yeah, I can see both ways to that.
And Rich Hakes is our building inspector. He's next to her. I don't know if many of you have met him, but he's next to her. Rich has been here for a year. Actually, he's worked with us for two years, but one year he was with a third party. He does a great job.
While we're at it, what's the arrangement about the building, zoning officers cutting around town?
Well, we haven't resolved that yet, but right now, they're sharing a car. The zoning vehicle that we have, the red one. But what we're thinking is?
I like mileage.
I know. Well, one of the things we're considering is Roger has to buy a new pickup truck next year. And the pickup truck that he drives, the value he will get for it's about $2,000. So, or two to three. So we may consider giving that to the building inspector and the other to the zoning officer, unless the supervisors want to pay mileage.
Thank you. About four to 6,000 miles, right?
Right.
Per year?
No. Maintenance costs.
The previous zoning officer drove a Mercedes station wagon.
He didn't drive around to, I don't think he drove around to.
I don't have a car like that.
Well, my expectations of our current new zoning officer is that they will be driving around inspecting properties.
Right. Trucks don't do a good thing for that.
Right. The board of supervisors held in, I'm sorry.
I'd like to add to the chairman's comment about new reports. The police incident report is also a new report on the website, and I certainly want to commend, you know, the board and manager for that. In fact, there, it does generate a number of questions, and I noticed that our police officers are not here. You know, it seems to be a conspicuous absence there because I think it's the third meeting that happened and they have been here prior to that. I just want to know if there's some policy now in effect that a representative from our police department does not now attend this meeting.
There's no policy on that and there was, it just works out that way at this particular point.
Well, I can further add to that because it is public knowledge that our police chief is on leave right now. It's not disciplinary leave. He's on leave. I don't know when that leave will end, so we are down to one police officer at the current time. It's been that way for about a month and a half.
Right. I mean, yeah, I can see that from the report.
So, so our police officer right now is working a lot of hours overtime currently, so that's why we didn't have him come to the meetings. But we can have him come to the next meeting if you'd like further explanation on the report.
Well, what I, what I would first suggest it, if you think it's appropriate, is that the questions I have now from the first report, I can show you, not in this meeting, but.
You can submit them to me via email or I can give you his email. And you can email him and he'd be happy to answer you.
Well, I'm not so much concerned about a dialogue between myself and a police officer. I'd rather have the dialogue concerning the whole community.
Okay. Well, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Question, though, Lisa. I was just curious. Chief McCarthy being on leave, is he still, I know he's signed a contract, is he still entitled to full salary and full benefits for that?
He is.
He is. Thank you.
I just had a comment about the reports by the engineering company about the roads, the pavement management system, the building and the structure. And I think when I look at it, it would be useful for planning. We'll be able to take a special look at the energy efficiency of the buildings, look to do upgrades there, but then also it'll give us an idea of what's our spend and what's the best way to then to invest our money to get the best rate of return over the time that we think.
Right.
And that'll be the next step, I think, that we want to look at when we're trying to sort out how best to manage the township.
And those reports will be put online as soon as they're finalized.
Are there any other questions or comments at this point, or can the manager continue on with her executive session and police summary?
The supervisors held an executive session this evening at 6:00 p.m. to discuss business matters related to obtaining real property. I'm going to read the police summary for the month of June. The Kennett Township Police Department, in conjunction with the Pennsylvania State Police, provided police services in 200 emergency police incidents. The police department conducted two specialized details relating to traffic and motor safety during the month of June. The police department conducted traffic enforcement in partnership with Pennsylvania Aggressive Driving Enforcement and Education Project. The focus of this traffic enforcement detail was to identify and cite aggressive drivers. This project is a year-long project with numerous waves of enforcement being conducted throughout the year. The funding from this grant for the month of June allowed for 24 hours of enforcement resulting in 54 traffic arrests and one criminal arrest. The police department, with the assistance of motor carrier enforcement officers, conducted a commercial motor carrier inspection enforcement detail in the 1,000 block of East Baltimore Pike. During the eight-hour detail, officers inspected 25 commercial motor carrier vehicles. Seven of those vehicles were found to have violations, which caused the vehicles to be placed out of service, deeming it unsafe to travel on the highway without repairs. Officers used, issued 20 traffic arrest citations for violations during this detail. The municipality has continued to be plagued during the month of June by a high volume of vehicle accidents, which resulted in injury to the occupants. Accident totals increased 2% over the previous month of May. As always, the police department encourages citizens to be observant and report suspicious activity and criminal activity to 911. Citizens' participation in reporting suspicious and criminal activity supports a proactive approach, which assisted the police department in solving and deterring criminal activity. And while we're on police, by the end of next week, all of the regional police surveys will be submitted for the regional police study. Where I'm waiting for some more data from our police department and then the Borough's almost done their survey, New Garden's done theirs, and that'll be submitted. It'll be about six months before we receive the results.
Since the concept of the regional police study evolved, have there been any other townships that have indicated a desire to participate besides the three?
No.
I think it is, just now?
No.
Where are the three? New Garden, Kennett Borough and Kennett Township.
And the only other one that comes to mind is East Marlboro. But so far, they've been.
Quiet.
Quiet. Any, any other comments in relation to the police report? On the, still under the announcements portion, Lisa, I forgot to pick this one up. Is there anything further on the hours for using the maintenance building for citizens dropping off, access to the recycling and whatnot?
The, there will be a gate installed on August 8th, which will automatically open and close from morning and night. We still aren't going to close it until dusk. We are putting in a camera back at the pile back there, so we'll be able to see if anybody is dumping illegally.
Good. Thank you.
And while we're on that, the big pile we have back there is going to, they're going to begin chipping it Monday. So then we'll have that done.
Lots of mulch.
Lots of mulch.
Much mulch.
Before we get to that, some old business, if I may. The status of ordinance 221, which is the retirement community standards. The planning commission wants an opportunity to comment on, on that ordinance. And the supervisors are of the opinion that 60 days is sufficient time to respond. So we're, we're in advance for 60 days while we await input from the planning commission for the retirement community standards issue that was raised. Hillendale Bridge update, we haven't heard anything more about the condition of Hillendale Bridge.
No.
So that's, that's also in advance. In the meantime, people are using it, thank God. And the status of the Marshall Bridge Road repairs. Do we have an update on that?
Yes. Our engineering firm has to do some redesign of what we would do out there for the Marshall Bridge stream bank rehabilitation. They are coming up with a proposal. They feel that what they are proposing is going to be less expensive than what our previous engineer had proposed. We should have that within the next few weeks and then we'll go out to bid for the work.
So presumably by this time next month?
We should have that report.
We should be further down the record?
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Sure.
On that 60-day scudder?
Yep.
When will that end? So we know, it's often hard to know when these things start.
I put it in an email to the planning commission and said that we now expect your comments by your October meeting.
October.
Mm-hmm. In the meantime, Jim Guthrie said that the planning commission would like to have a consultant look at the ordinance and do some rewriting of the ordinance. So I have passed that by the supervisors and the PC will be allowed to do that within the 60 days.
They have a budget, so when that comes out of their budget, I have to say that I personally think that that's, doesn't make a lot of sense. It seems like you're completely rewriting something and I'd be able to do it in a more efficient way than that, but that's what you want to do, that you're going to.
Well, you mean by you, you mean the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions regarding any of this? Okay. We have, maybe we have a motion to pay the bills?
Sub move.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Looks like that passes. All right. The next thing on the agenda is the international fire code standard.
So the fire companies approached us a while ago and wanted us to adopt the international fire code, which is part of the building code. Our building inspector also requested we adopt this code because there's a lot of things in the international fire code that our building inspector and fire marshal, they need to be able to enforce. So ordinance 219 adopts the international fire code and it will become effective in five days. Does anybody have any questions on the fire code?
Is it posted on the, on the website, the basics of it?
The entire ordinance is on the website.
Wonderful. Thank you. There's one section where it says township to specify, so we could be able to do that not by their ordinance, but by other means later?
Correct.
Will that likely affect existing residential property?
That will affect, Rich, I'll have you speak on that.
Thanks, Rich.
Sorry, your checks.
Basically, what it will help us do is to give a little more enforcement in certain areas, and again, it'll definitely benefit the township to their ability to enhance, to protect the citizens and the residents in health, safety and welfare.
But it's not for existing?
It is not, it is not for existing. It's basically whatever comes up along the way.
And then you'll help us specify what areas it's supposed to apply to, I guess, depending on how dense the residences are and people are.
It's very blanketed, I would say. If you go through the code, it'll, it'll, it'll work its way through different areas for enforcement, if that's really what you're.
Right, but I think we have to specify where it get the ordinance.
Through, fill, that's the fill in the blanks.
Right.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that part you'll help us.
Absolutely, yes. I think that and then plus the fire marshal, we might want to put our heads together with that too and see if he has comments that would be, he would be entertaining.
And we have a motion to adopt it.
Agree with you, adopt ordinance 219?
I second.
Any further discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And support as well, so it passes. May we have a motion to, and then we'll have discussion after that, adopt ordinance 220, swimming pool standards. Just got moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce that to us, please?
This is, ordinance 220 is to govern private, non-commercial swimming pools in order to protect the health, safety and welfare of residents. This ordinance will, it talks about, for the first section, it talks about non-commercial swimming pools and it talks about the release mechanisms, which shall be no less than 54 inches. It references Appendix G of the International Residential Code. And this is for all new pools. It isn't for.
It's for new pools.
It's for all new pools.
Not, not old ones.
Not old ones.
Although it makes sense for old ones, but it's not that.
Right. Yes.
Be hard to move them on setbacks standards, I think. All right. Are there any questions or comments regarding this?
Scott, is this new? I mean, the township never had one before, or is this an amendment of, of existing?
There was one before. This is amending the prior one. Is that correct?
And it's, and it's referencing the International Residential Code. And it's, and it's referencing the international residential code.
The other one didn't?
Correct.
Question answered.
And if I remember as I read it, trying to understand it, it's affecting the kind of fences that are going around this attractive nuisance. It's also defining the setback so that it was making a somewhat humorous, he wishes, comment about moving already existing swimming pools. I think it's 20 feet from the property line now. If you're close to your property line, you have a problem to be able to, to correct that problem, I should think. Anyway, yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, what it does also, it prevents the fencing going on specifically on the property line, has a setback that way, folks, the neighbors can't pile debris or anything against that, where folks, our children, something may have the ability to climb over the fence. So it's very, much more protective and, you know, for safety purposes.
Is that five feet back from the property line? What's the setback for the fence?
Fine.
Yeah, in here. It's five feet.
Fine.
Was there, I'll be with you a second. Was there a question back here? Yes, ma'am.
Are there any reports of existing swimming pools in the township that have been identified as problems under the previous ordinance that you are following up on or checking on, to your knowledge? No.
I'm not aware of any. Yes, ma'am.
Is the section 1A, which has a sentence in here that, "A self-closing and latching gate of at least four feet in height, and all latches shall be locked from the exterior with access gained only by key or combination mechanism." Is that new?
No. No, well, that's always been required on gates for pools. Well.
Does that occur?
I think we figured out, was it like 80?
77, I think we adopted through the code at that point in time, the township adopted the code.
Right.
Again, that's part of the access gate requirements of the appendix G of the international residential code. And actually, there's a further explanation. If you, if it doesn't meet that, your gate doesn't meet that ability to put a 54-inch latch, you have to put a latch on the inside of the gate and the gate's out swinging. So children can't reach over. It has to be so many inches below the top of the gate. So to protect, again, a child or to reach over to unlatch the gate.
So this, this really applies when the gate and the gate is, and the swimming pool is unattended then?
That is correct.
When it's intended, we don't have to have a lock on our pools.
You won't, you won't lock it, but it also, with the 54-inch high lock, if a child that doesn't have the ability to, a small child cannot reach up and pick the lock up. It's a spring-loaded latch. Typically, it takes, takes a teenager or an adult to.
But it doesn't apply to existing pools.
Does it apply to existing pools?
No.
No.
It's only for new pools.
Unless the pools met that barrier requirement at that time, there wasn't requirement. It just enforces that.
Okay.
I thought one of your questions was, if the family's in there swimming, do you have to have this gate closed and locked? And I'm assuming the answer is, on new construction, I'm assuming the answer is no. It's when it's, when there's nobody there that, that you're concerned.
Unattended, I think that's the word I used. Unattended, you have to have it locked.
Yes.
And if in fact it's not locked, there is a, it's going to be somewhat difficult for a child to unlatch that, is what we're preventing.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And aye as well? This passes. Maybe have a motion for ordinance number 222, no parking standards at, in Penn's Manor.
Agree with you, approve ordinance 222?
Second.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce that for us, please?
The HOA of Penn's Manor subdivision requested that we do a traffic study on the roads in there to determine if parking should be permitted on the roads instead of just in the specified parking areas, because a lot of people were parking on the roads and we had a lot of complaints that they had difficulties getting through. When our trucks would plow, there was a lot of problems. People would pull out of their driveways, it was, it seemed to be getting blocked. So the traffic study was done and the result is that there shouldn't, there should not be parking on the roads. It should be prohibited. So we have created an ordinance to prohibit parking on all the roads within Penn's Manor So this, again, this ordinance will be in effect in five days. No parking signs will be posted in, throughout the development.
Yes, Bill.
If Victoria Gardens were to request the same, would the township do a traffic study in Victoria Gardens?
Well, we would, but I don't know if the township supervisors would pay for it.
Okay, here's the concern. We have in Victoria Gardens, we have indented parking spaces. They're okay. But I remember chatting with Bruce one time when he was over helping us on another area, that people park in our circles. And if this big fire equipment needs to come in and go through one of the circles, they're going to take out these cars that park there. And I don't think, sometimes we don't have the authority as an association really to prevent that. And we have no way to back it up if we assume the authority. It would help if the township could tell us what to do in that regard.
Well, we could absolutely do a traffic study and it could be, and if it was decided that they shouldn't be parking on the street, the same thing could be done. However, since it's private roads, I'd have to see how that would work.
Yes.
As far as, we couldn't create an ordinance for it, but we could see how that would work. I don't know if the association entirely could prohibit it, but I'll check into that.
Okay, well, you could always dedicate the roads.
We could do that too.
And that's where, that was the ultimate question, Bill, wasn't it?
Pardon me?
Isn't that the ultimate question? That the, the way your property, your Victoria Gardens was designed?
Yeah, you'll never, we'll never dedicate the roads, we know that.
Yeah, they were designed to be smaller than what could be dedicated and that was intentionally done by your developer.
Right. And it's a hazard in these circles and if the guys from Longwood or Kennett have to come in, they're going to bulldoze some cars, have to slow them down. But, and that worries me and I keep telling neighbors that you can't park in the circles. We have indented parking just for that purpose.
Well, may I suggest that, that Victoria Gardens comes in and talks to us at a work session and perhaps, perhaps we could come up with a solution to address this problem because this is, this goes back to inception.
Yes.
And, and the residents at Victoria Gardens have been left with, with the mess that the developer created. And we've all struggled, both from the township management side and from the resident's side, trying to solve these problems, sometimes with less grace than at other times. But let's try to do this with grace. Come in and talk to us and maybe we can find a way to.
Okay.
Work something out.
I'll do that. Thanks, Scott.
And in the meantime, I'll check on what it would take if we were to prohibit parking in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious. At Christmas, when someone wants to have a Christmas party and his four-car driveway is full, where do those people park?
In Penn's Manor.
Yeah, do they get tickets or?
They would get tickets, but there are satellite parking areas.
There are, okay.
There are.
And there's intended parking in the middle?
Yes.
Island park in the middle.
Yeah. The problem was that in addition to all that parking that was set up specifically to address the issue that you mentioned, people were parking on the main thoroughfare and the roads aren't wide enough to, to put up with that and still be able to safely get by. So it created this hazard that results in this ordinance.
Lisa, have you heard from the HOA at Penn's Manor?
Yes, I've talked to them about it. They're aware.
What do they think about this ordinance?
I haven't heard any objection.
Good, thank you.
And I also let them know they, they were going to send out a mass email this past weekend, letting, telling all their residents when this would be in effect, if it passes, and that everybody needs to be prepared that after that, they, they cannot park on the street.
Is there anyone from Penn's Manor? You?
No.
Penn's Manor, no, it's Victoria.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from supervisors or the residents? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye's for me as well, so this ordinance also passes. Lisa, do you want to introduce us to bikeway?
We have a bikeway payment request from Highway Materials. This is payment number six in the amount of $237,325.49. There's approximately $225,000 left to be paid.
I agree with you, make that payment.
I'll second.
George, you have any thoughts on that?
It goes through a very formal process with PennDOT, following the design and the inspection process. That billing is a result of the inspector carefully reviewing what's been done, submitting it to PennDOT, PennDOT approves it and then it comes back through the township. So I think it's proper to pay it and we'll continue to get a few more bills.
Do you have a completion date, George?
No, I'm like.
We're going to report on that in a few.
Okay. I was going to ask.
Under public comment.
Okay. Okay, are there any other questions or comments? This is, this is, for those who might not know that, this is an ongoing project that's been going on for 10 years, 15 years?
Yeah.
10 years. It's been going on for somebody's lifetime, at least two individuals' lifetime. And it's finally going on. If you drive on 52, you'll see there's been a lot of construction and paving on the side of the road and it's now about to work on landscaping. We'll hear the details of all that. Anyway, this is one of the progress payments that we need to make. Are there any other comments or questions? All in favor? Aye, passes. Thank you. I think that we're up to the, the roadwork presentation.
The mowing and trimming was completed this past week. The oil and chip seal coat program for 2014 was completed. A new application called fogging was done this year. This type of application leaves less stone on the roads once it's completed. A new water line was installed on Rosedale Road by Chester Water. Final restoration will start with repaving road crossings and shoulder restorations. Roadwork was done on Flitton Drive and Southridge subdivision. The center of the cul-de-sac was partially removed and, and will, will be paved to make the road wider. New inlet and crosspipes were installed on Byrd Road between Byburnham and Sills Mill Road. Drainage swales were dug out and regraded on Wren Lane and Falcon's Lair to correct the water flow. Several storms this month led to trees and wires down, which leads to a long time without power in parts of the township. Roads were closed until PICO removed the wires. During the storm, the traffic lights and pump stations were all on generators. The road crew renewed their flagger training. One of the co-op members is a certified trainer, so the training was free. Trees at the intersection of Byrd and Hillendale Roads were removed by the township to improve the site distance. Replacement trees will be planted in place, setback further from the intersection.
On the Byrd and Hillendale point that you just referenced, as you drive by there, it certainly is a much lighter intersection and certainly the visibility is greatly improved. Is there any intention in the plan to not only plant trees set in from the road, is there an intention to regrade that corner as well?
Yes.
Okay. And that, that's going to be done in the immediate future, before the trees are planted, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any, any input on roadworks?
I just had a question. Scott, go ahead.
I just, I just want to thank everybody for doing, because I use, have used that corner for probably 40 years or 50 years and it is just a tremendous improvement, even the way it is now.
Yes.
I was going to make the same comment. This has been a problem for us here, many years I can remember. And secondly, the question is, why do we have to plant new trees?
Well, that was the deal to get the property owner to let us cut the trees down in the first place.
Yes, Mrs. Weiner?
Yes. Well, now we're dealing with the daughter and son-in-law.
It's in estate.
Now there'll be small trees. There won't be big trees.
Get them back as far, well, they, they got to be out of the right of way then.
They will be way ways back.
And if you regrade that corner and the trees are back, so now you have a sight line that can go diagonally across that corner, so you should be able to see.
The sumps are still there now, aren't they?
I can't hear you.
Are the sumps there?
They are.
So they're going to be removed, obviously.
Yes.
They're pretty tall sumps.
Well, the reason they're there was when they cut the trees, they could only go down so far because there's barbed wire in it from the old fencing. So that's why they had to leave the stump, so they'll get them out.
Hope it remains.
Yeah. Thanks for that input.
One thing on the road report talked about was power outages.
Did we have some?
Well, just a few, in the past week. Roger, the roadmaster, and I will be meeting with PICO. It was supposed to be this week, but they postponed it to next week because they're busy with the storms. But we will be meeting with our PICO rep and his boss to discuss the continual power outages in the township and what we can do.
To add to that, you may not remember, if you can't, you're lucky, the, the power outages during the winter. And one of the things that we committed to do was to open up a line of communication with PICO to talk about that. And as a consequence of that effort, we had that session at the high school, the Kennett High School, where we, where they had a, a number of PICO employees present and they gave us a presentation and we had a chance to talk to a number of people. So that helped us to get the door open. Lisa's continuing to follow through with that line of communication. And as you might imagine, the supervisors have had some thoughts on the subject, which we've conveyed to Lisa, most of them politely, if not emphatically. Like you, we've, we've been impacted as well. Anyway, what I'm suggesting is that if any of you have any thoughts or concerns, continue to communicate with Lisa or any of the other supervisors and let us know your concerns so that they can be conveyed to, to PICO because from my perspective, there's a lot that PICO needs to answer to. And this is one effort to be able to get those answers coming in. But we, it's happening next week, so if you have comments, get them into our soon.
I will say during the storm on July 3rd, on July 4th, of course, the aftermath of the storm, I was on the phone with PICO a lot during the day and they were very responsive. You know, I was asking about different areas and telling about different trees that were still on wires and everything, so I was able to have good communication throughout the day. Now, I know that didn't really speed up the process, but. Now, I know that didn't really speed up the process, but at least I was able to speak to them.
Yeah, I think, no, they lost power, but I had access to the Internet. And there I was following how residents, Kennet Township residents, were faring compared to other townships. Our township had at one time three times more power outages than any other township.
Forty thousand, wasn't it?
Well, people across whole Chester County, but if you went into Chester County, you could see the breakdown by township. And Kennet Township at one point in time had four or three times any other township. And so one of the questions that we're going to ask is, what are PICO's plans to have restoration of power in Kennet Township comparable to what's present in other townships?
Yes, I was bothered by a comment that I heard, and I don't know if it's true or not, but that PICO would rather pay for maintenance, not maintenance, they would rather pay to restore power than invest to prevent power outages. And I couldn't believe that any management would make that type of statement, because all new communities are underground. Ours is underground, but we're still impacted by above-ground wires. Why don't they have a program that addresses taking a community or roadway year by year and getting it underground and preventing these trees from falling on the first place?
I will ask that question.
Right, there was at the Chester County meeting of townships, there was a request for PICO to look into that. So at all the meeting of all the township officers, that request went in. It was a few months ago, I think. So there have been some questions raised along those lines.
Good.
I don't know if the answers will be any better, but we can at least keep asking.
Annoyingly, it seems to be getting a little worse. I had the pleasure of talking to the fourth contractor for my backup generator, and they shared with me that they've had 12 bids this month in Kennet Township, and four, they took four approvals with you guys this week. So it's getting worse. People are getting really fed up.
Yeah.
We're getting short of the stick.
And Jim Nelson, I know you submitted a letter.
Yes.
To PICO back prior, you put, Jim put in a 10 to our PICO meeting, so he submitted a letter that we forwarded to PICO, and I've been following up with PICO every week, trying to get a response from him. And when I talked to our PICO rep on Friday, he said, I know, I'm still trying to get that answered. You know, unfortunately, I can't answer it.
Let me tell you that I'm disturbed that, I wrote that letter back in January, I think I sent it to Lisa at the February meeting at that point in time, and I haven't received the response to the letter. The letter included a number of items. One of the items was that I believe that PICO should invest in a program to undertake replacement of overhead lines and put them underground, not all at one time, of course, because it's a monumental and terrible expense, but to do it on a piecemeal basis, not erect any new overhead power lines. And this was when the new power lines went in along Hillendale Road to service the community on Byrd, Byrd Meadows. And of course, it was ignored. They just said it's too expensive. The other problem is, is that PICO has the policy, of course, restoring power to large developments first. And I can understand that to a degree. However, and I suggested in my letter, that PICO should undertake a study to find out which large developments might be served by a water source other than wells. Because those people without electricity and who have a well are really up a creek, because there's nothing then to prevent frozen.
Individuals who are on a well have the same creek that they're up.
That's correct. And there should be a policy where they can have a map of overlays showing developments that have water service, where a person, even if they're without power, can turn the water on and let the water trickle, which will then prevent the pipes from freezing. The answer, there were many other issues in that letter, but PICO is, they're an arrogant large company, and they will not listen to individuals. I don't know if they'll even listen to the township. But I think there's a problem with this type of utility company. My wife was very upset over a year ago, because we have a generator, and we weren't here during a very major storm, and our generator was running for seven days, and the expense was phenomenal. And when we found when power was finally restored, we were down to 3% gas left for the generator, which would have done serious damage had the generator then gone off. So my wife applied, she filed a complaint with PUC, with the Pennsylvania Utilities Commission. She has yet to receive a response after a year. It shows that the utility commission is just as arrogant as utility company. I intend to continue to follow through, because I'm not going to let my letter go unanswered. There are many other issues that I addressed in that letter, but again, I'm afraid that we have to act in concert to do something about this, because the utility is just too arrogant, too powerful. They don't care about anybody else.
I agree with you 100%.
Let's move on.
Unfortunately.
Well, I do keep following up, asking them for a response.
Mr. Chairman, if I may speak to Dr. Left's reference about Cato, Chester County Association of Township Officials, they did put a resolution together to, what, to PSATs, Pennsylvania State, to see if they can get something to push to move utilities and infrastructure underground. It sort of was dying of slow death, so we tried.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're not, unfortunately, is the message.
Are there any other comments or questions or concerns regarding the PICO issue? We'll keep you advised as we keep working at this, and we ask that you keep us advised where, as you learn things or experience things as well. Perhaps we can come up with a way to consolidate groups and get a little bit more negotiating power.
Maybe they'd let us use their bathrooms over here at Exelon.
At least take a shower.
It's a shame we no longer have the chairman of PICO as the Kennet Township president. When he was here, it was the best.
Yeah.
There was only one other thing, and I think it was Bob Havaker that hot showed this for a while with PICO. There are certain roads here, Hillendale is one, Kalen Road is another, where you lose AM bandwidth because of high static. You drive down Hillendale Road with your radio on AM, and the static is tremendous. Hillendale, I mean, Kalen Road going south from the burrow has a stretch from five points down to maybe another 400 or 500 yards, just wipes out AM radio.
And this is the overhead lines?
I think Bob found out in his contact that it was because of leakage on the high-voltage lines that can't be controlled. It's expensive. They've got to go up on the lines and check where the leakage has come from, and make sure the insulators are properly designed and appropriate for the problem.
The other thing that's terrible is cell phone service on some of these roads.
Some of these houses?
Yes.
Okay, anything else on PICO or electricity? Okay, then we're up to Richardson's run, release number five.
We received a report from Ranger Air requesting $336,213.50. I move we pay that, make that release.
A second.
Is there any discussion on that? Is there anything you need to do to it?
Well.
Have they ever paid the fees they neglected to pay when they started this project?
No, they don't have, well, they paid for the first phase. For the second phase, maybe that's what you're talking about, they don't have to pay that until they start the second phase.
Do you know for when they're starting the second phase?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
Have they indicated a bridge when they plan on, I mean, they just have, they're building their first home in Phase One, or their second, they have their model home.
But the second phase has been reviewed for zoning, correct?
Right. But they haven't applied for the building permits or anything, and they have, they have put up their S-400.
And the roads aren't through to the second phase at this point. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
As in, aye, so it passes.
We have a request to defer an extension for the Lord Hal Speekman property until October 2nd. I move we approve that extension.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Okay, that gets us down to public comment, and I believe I heard John Hadrick make a request to be heard on the subject of the bikeway.
Yes.
So why don't we pass to him for the moment?
Tom and I wanted to give a update. I think it's particularly appropriate, you know, this week, because on Monday, we had a walk along the entire site with the contractor and the inspector, and looked at every detail of what they had put in place, and developed a punch list of things to complete. And to be honest, it was a very short list. We also, I'll just advise that, you know, how the residents have responded, we haven't heard too much feedback, a few complaints. They mostly involve these outlet drains. You may be aware that the shoulder, when they rebuilt the shoulder, in the sections where they rebuilt, they put a drain system underneath the whole shoulder to carry excess water off. Well, those things have to exit to daylight here and there. And PennDOT's come up with a great big concrete box to protect the end of the pipe. In a few cases, I'm sorry, maybe three cases, that caused conflict with people who wanted to maintain a lawn and stuff like that. But those have been resolved. The other issue that came up, where we had to change from the design a little bit, it was intended that we go to 11-foot versus a 12-foot travel lane. We ended up with approximately 11 and a half foot travel lane. The reason being, they couldn't put that little rumble strip that's on the edge on the seam where the new pavement meets the old pavement. You couldn't grind a rumble strip into the seam. So they compromised at the very last minute. PennDOT maintenance came through, and they came up with a new solution. So now we have a 11 and a half foot travel lane instead of a six-foot bike lane, it's five and a half feet, but it still passes PennDOT's review. So the bottom line is, the punch list is developed, and the contractor will likely finish this week. The only thing that I'm aware that they have to do, besides a few little cleanup items, is to repaint the edge white strip and a little bit of grading and seeding, I think mostly on this west side of 52. Then we'll have to wait for the final tabulation of quantities and all that, and then we'll get final billings. It looks as though we're under budget a little bit on the inspection, and we do not know yet on materials for the main construction, because all that has to be tabulated. We had no change orders at all on the job. So our guess is we're going to come in very much close to the $800,000 construction cost and the $82,000 inspection cost. If any resident has any issue, they should try to get feedback. Lisa's been one of the main contacts to receive that, so that we can address it. But we're not hearing really any outstanding complaints that I'm aware of at this point.
When is the landscaping portion to be completed? Is that this next week?
No. Recall that the landscaping grant is a completely independent project, and the project team's approach to that was to let this contract get completed and settled, and then work on that issue, because they had about $30,000 in their budget to do some landscaping, basically clearing. In fact, one of the places south of Mendon Hall, they were supposed to use herbicide to kill back the brush after they cut it. Well, apparently, they didn't do that. I think the inspector is going to try to have them go in here as a punch list item and deal with that one area where the growth is very heavy. So the landscaping thing will be specified as we go through the next few months, and we'll decide how we're going to let bids and so forth for the work. It's going to be a little bit complicated process, because most of the landscaping will be cooperative efforts from landlords, like we were talking about at the McFarland, no, I'm sorry, Byrd-Hillendale intersection. Going to do any significant landscaping, particularly if we're going to plant new, quote, "street trees," it's going to have to be on private lands.
So when?
When will that happen?
When my friend Dan, who lives on 52, says, "I've been disrupted by all this construction work and all the traffic going in and out of Wilmington and being backed up." Is it done yet? And I can say, "The pavement work and the infrastructure work is done, but the landscaping hasn't been started, but it'll be done blank." What do I tell them?
To be safe, I would tell them it'll be done next spring.
And it'll be worked on during the wintertime?
We'll probably do a fair amount in the fall, mostly cleanup work. We'll talk to the arborists to find out the best time to plant trees. That may be in fall also, but that, again, that's going to be on private lands more than.
Is it anticipated that that landscaping work is going to be disrupting traffic on 52 as has this other construction been doing?
It will not be nearly the extent, but if they have to remove a tree, they would have a flagger there, so they don't drop the tree on the car and all that stuff.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Yeah, I just had one question. How do you keep the cars out of the bike lane?
The rumble strip.
Is that the only measure?
Yeah, do you have any other good ideas?
Well, I don't know.
We've gone on down to Centerville for years, no cars are in their bike path.
Right, up in Delaware, it's pretty clearly marked that the cars are not allowed to move out of the auto lane into the bike lane.
Well, the approach here is.
I mean, I'm just saying, that traffic coming out of Wilmington is pretty aggressive in the evenings, and you always get people trying to zip around, and the consequences could be.
The sign says, "Share the road," and it's really not a formal bike path. That's a distinction that PennDOT makes. Share the road means.
Yeah, that's kind of vague.
Automobiles, well, I don't know, probably from a legal standpoint, it has a specific meaning, but it means the automobiles have to respect bicycles, and the bicycles have to stay and ride, you know, with the traffic, that kind of thing.
Well, I'm sure the bicycles are going to stay in the bike lane.
Don't be so sure.
But the concern is the cars, you know, whenever you make a left there on 52, it's not uncommon for somebody to be right coming up your backside and scoot around the right of you without slowing down. So I mean, that's a common.
So, I mean, that's a common, and not having any visual, I'm just concerned that, I'm wondering if there are stronger signage we could put.
John, in Centerville, they put signs up going through saying, "If you make a right turn, bikers have right of way."
Did I understand you correctly, John, to say that even though it's been identified here and on signs on 52 that this is a bike lane, technically, it's not a bike lane?
That's correct.
Can you tell us what that means, please?
To meet the PennDOT requirements for a bike lane, it, I believe, I'll put this way, we cannot meet the criteria. I don't know the criteria precisely, but the width, I believe there's even separation issues. We just don't have the room to do that.
There's also a shoulder issue besides the bike lane requirement.
It'd be the bike lane, you have to have a shoulder, and you have then the vehicle.
Yeah, I think the bike lane is a separate path, you might say, separated from the road. So this is a share the road concept.
And there'll be signage, a lot of signage down about bicycles?
There's, I believe there's four signs. There's four.
Are there going to be any more, or that's...
I will point out in Centerville, going north, I think there's 29 signs, going south, there's 26 or something.
There's signage overload there.
We don't want that in Kennet Township.
But your suggestion back here about who has the right of way and share the road and other kinds of signage, whether it's painted on the road or on a pole, have you, your committee, both of you, considered some of these other signage options to encourage a more benign interaction between cars and bikes?
Well, we're pretty well told what to do by PennDOT. We just have to have, their sign has to go through their signage area, right, John?
Correct. Well, but that's confusing, because there's a sign that I, as I come down from one, there's a square sign that says, "Bike way." But it isn't a bike way, so I'm not sure PennDOT, they put up a bike way sign when it's not a bike lane?
It's not a bike path.
Not a bike path.
I believe that's the distinction.
But it's a bike way?
We've had a lot of arguments about this.
I guess I can understand one. Okay, yes.
It's my understanding that a bicycle has to follow the rules of any other vehicle, and so if a bicycle is ahead of you making a right turn, you can't just run over them. They are, you have to, you know, they're a vehicle as well. And so when you're on a road, you know, riding with the cars, you need to obey all the rules that, that's my understanding of riding a bicycle.
Well, and you're actually right, and it would be really nice if the drivers of vehicles that are not bicycles would have that same approach.
Right.
Because it doesn't work that way.
Right, but I mean, if everybody knew all the rules that were supposed to be being applied, I think it would be a lot better now. We can't post all the rules on the side of the road. It's not practical, so...
We can look into that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Are they going to be repaving 52 and all in the near future? Because even with all the construction, it's pretty rough if you're driving, let alone bicycling along that.
That's correct. We've heard in two to three years, but, you know, that's very informal notification.
Well, we've also been working, when they do the repaving, to improve the shoulders in Pensbury, so we've got a continuous route all the way down.
Is there a comment back here? Okay. Yes?
So I've heard about planting trees here, and I've also heard about planting trees at that corner for a site. So when you plant a tree for the maintenance, it's really important to have water, so I would suggest that we have what's called a water gator put on the trees, that we're paying for the trees, and some way that water be put in that gator so that the young tree, just newly planted, doesn't die.
We're aware of that.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
I was going to read a statement about the Chandler Mill Bridge, but I don't think that's part of this meeting.
Well, before we do that, this is public comment, so that might be totally appropriate, but listen, have we finished on the question of a bike path?
Yeah.
The bike way? The 52 improvement, whatever it is?
I've got one comment.
Shoulder improvement. Shoulder improvement, thank you.
One person that's done a lot of work on this is Lisa Moore. Keeping PennDOT happy with all of their paper mill, all the time she's had to sign her signature as the township manager, handling the payment of the bills, as you see, not only does she pay the contractor, then she's got to go to PennDOT to get reimbursed. It's been a very complicated thing, but Lisa has really been a big help on coordinating all the paper flow through PennDOT and everyone, and thank you very much, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Basically, what I'm saying now, to break me down, is that there are a lot of people in the township who are not 100% for having the Chandler Mill Bridge a one-way bridge or a pedestrian bridge only. I think that the supervisors have every right to do what they feel is the thing to do, but I would strongly urge you to do a survey of the township to see how people really feel. I think having the bridge not available for emergency vehicles is a real danger in the township. I think there are many other bridges that may be failing, and we may be really isolating people by closing bridges. And I'm concerned that people will maybe attaching, donating open space to this project. I think open space is terribly important, but I think it should be looked in on its entire merits and not be dependent on a bridge being open on out. I don't think that if the bridge is repaired, that this road will become a major highway. It never was before, I don't think it would now. And so I'm also very concerned about the amount of money that the township will be making, what we may have to pay over the years if it takes on that bridge and circumstances change. I think having the county keep the bridge and maybe having it not as attractive as it would really like it to be in the long run would be, should be something that really should not be, should be something that really needs to be thought about very seriously.
Well, I can assure you that the supervisors continue to wrestle with the question of what to do about the bridge and what to do about the road, and we're continuing to look into various, trying to get additional input. So we've gotten additional input from the engineers as to what it would cost, and if it was done through federal, state money, if it were done by the township, and what the different options are. So we continue to wrestle with this, and we acknowledge the points that you raise are very important. We're looking for input from the safety committee. We're looking for input from the LCAC, and we, of course, are open to any additional communication from the community on all of the issues that pertain to this question. It isn't finished, and even though it's not high on the noise level in the township, from the township supervisor's point of view, it's still being pursued, and trying to come up with the answers to ultimately a final decision. So I do appreciate your input on that. Thank you. Yes, John?
I've got another subject here I'd like to just bring up. I've been concerned, being on the planning commission for quite a while, about what I call electronic signs.
Electronic selling?
Signs. Signs. Recently, I think we've seen in the general area, a number of these being installed, particularly the major billboard type ones up near Westchester and south on 202. And the other example I think of is the one down on Pennsylvania Avenue, just beyond Lincoln Street in Wilmington. It's a very annoying, bright sign, a car light. But in any case, the intention, as I recall from Kennet Township, was to really prohibit any of these signs that had any kind of lights and that type of thing on them, except for a sign that you might see at a bank that shows the time and the temperature. We have, we will allow that, but no other sign that changes. Well, the technology is moving so quickly. I think we need to review our ordinance and the state law and so forth. So this may be a good example with a new board, new solicitor, and a new zoning officer to review. This is section 240-2107, section F. It says, is all it says, "Any sign with flashing, revolving, moving, sound or vapor-producing, or animated parts, and so on and so on, is prohibited." Well, flashing may not be enough basis to prohibit LED-type computer displays, and I don't think that's what we want in this township. So I would ask the board to have our solicitor, mainly a question for the solicitor, you know, what does the law allow? What can we regulate? And make sure that we have an ordinance that will withstand somebody trying to put in a very unbecoming sign.
So I'm not being smart with you, don't misunderstand me, but are you speaking to me as an individual?
Yes.
Or are you speaking to me as a member of the planning commission?
Individual.
Okay. So then, my suggestion would be that we make a request to planning commission to give us some advice.
Can I speak on this subject?
Yes.
We speak about these signs continually in our office. Rich Hicks, our building inspector, can comment as well that the flashing signs are not permitted, and it's a problem, and we have one particular area where we do have a flashing sign that it wasn't enforced, and it's going to be enforced now, but it's not permitted. But in general, I know that Rich agrees that we do need to revise that whole ordinance, that whole section. And so I think that if we start looking at that ordinance, we need to have our building inspector, our zoning officer, also give input, because they have a lot of concerns with the sign ordinance.
Because they don't flash, they just change.
That's what I think that you want to do, is address changeable copy on a sign.
Right.
So it sounds like something that the planning commission can help us sit through.
I think what we'll do is we'll have, we'll work with our solicitor and our codes office and see what we come up with, and then we'll have the planning commission also give their input.
Thank you.
Rather than reinvent the wheel, check with the borough, Kettin Borough. They have very specific restrictions and instructions on lighted signs, and there's a lot of different ways you light a sign, and they have very specific details on that.
Is there anything else in the public comment section of our agenda that we would like to bring up? Yes, sir? Did you have anything else to say about the Chandler Mill Bridge discussions you've been having, such as with the county?
We haven't had any further discussions with the county.
Thank you. I should talk to her. All in favor?
A second.
Thank you all very much.